Parang nasa lounge lang tayo. Parang lounging at ganun din.
Session is now called to either. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero saan silang anan? Alang ng kuso, sa bibig mo'y buhay. Lubang hiniram, buyan ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi, kita pa sisilin. Sa lalat, bundok sa simoy at sa langitong paghahal. Kay hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wataw at moy kagumpay narating pilip. Ang pitumin na paraw niya kailan, pampay magidilin. Luban ang maraw ng wad, aming pagsikta. Uyay langit sa bibig ko. Aming ligaya napak may mahapin. At lamatay ng daring sayo.
There being no volunteer for our prayer this afternoon. It does all take a moment of silence to reflect on what we have done and what we have failed to do. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Secretary General is directed to call the roll. Roll call of members. Honorable Representatives Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Masaron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adiyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsay Say, Aragones, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagapsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Baltista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertiz, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilio, Bondo, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Rosas, Bulot Begtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixterobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pret, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serrapica, Seriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Co, Coanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Coa, Coaresma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Muhammad, Duabit, Dorano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erisé, Rigel, Ermita Buain, Estudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Josebio, Ebardoni, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Julia, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Lorendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garvin, García Gwendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herreradi, Hopper, Halos Jos, Javier, Co, Hong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Leation, Li, Limkaisong, LaBregat, López Benhar, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Soharto, Mangodadato Sahid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerigo, Nograles Carlos, Nolasco, Núñez Malaníaon, Uaminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Beninola, Paqueau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pamaniban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rebilia, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdés, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, Zambar, Sandoval, San Copán, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabelliano, Semá, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suárez, C. Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Cierni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villafuerte, Villarraza Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, You. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 221 members responded to the call. With 221 members all well dressed, exquisitely made up and color coordinated, the chair declares a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 66 dated February 21, 2018. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up reference of business and direct the Secretary General to read titles of bills and resolutions on first reading.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Secretary General is directed to read the reference of business. Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading. House Bill 7204. Creating two additional branches of the RTC, Representative Ferrer. Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 7205. Declaring the Special Sierra Bar Examination as Civil Service Examination amending for the purpose Republic Act 1080, by Representative San Copán and Mending.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 7207. Declaring the Pascuaan Villages and San Fernando Pampanga as Cultural Heritage and further declaring as property of public domain by Representative González Aurelio.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7208. Establishing the Philippine Ear, Nose and Throat Center by Representative C. Alvarado.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 7209. Creating the Shercau Development Authority by Representative C. Alvarado.
Committee on, Committee on Government Enterprise and Privatization.
House Bill 7210. Mandating the establishment of at least one high school for the arts in every region nationwide by Representative García J.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7211. Increasing the minimum salaries of public school teachers and other government employees and augmenting the personal economics relief allowance by Representative Tinio Castro Saratil de Jesus and Elago.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 7212. Declaring January 17 of every year as James El Gordon Day, a special non-working holiday in the city of Olongapo, and January 17 to February 20 of every year as James El Gordon Month in the city of Olongapo, in recognition of the achievements and contributions of James Leonard Tagli Gordon to said city on the occasion of his 100th birthday by Representative Hernández.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7213. Granting additional benefits to solo parents amending for this purpose, Republic Act Number 8972, by Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7214. Amending certain sections and adding sections under Chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, all under the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended by Representatives Son Sing H. and Son Sing E.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
Resolutions. House Resolution 1707. Directing the Committees on Cooperatives Development and Agrarian Reform to jointly inquire on the alleged abuse of authority and willful partiality on the regional and provincial officials of the DAR in Karaka Region by Representatives Bravo and Canama.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1708. Urging the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs to inquire on the case of quiet OFW Joanna Daniela Di Ma Palace by Representative de Jesus et al.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate. Messages dated February 19, 2018 informing the House that the Senate even date passed with amendments House Bill 6203, 6465, and 6202.
Rules Committee.
Messages dated February 20, 2018 informing the House that on February 19, 2018, the Senate passed without amendment House Bill Numbers 5578, 6102, 6104, 6522, 6528, 6531, 6532, 6533, 6534, 6535, 6607, 6608, 6529, 6530, 6186, and 6523.
Rules Committee.
Messages dated February 20, 2018 informing the House that the Senate on February 19, 2018 passed Senate Bill Numbers 1636.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
Messages dated February 20, 2018 informing the House that the Senate on February 19, 2018 passed Senate Bill Numbers 1317, 108, and 1617.
Rules Committee.
Communications. Letter dated December 5, 2017 of Maria Antoinette Velasco Oliones, Executive Director, Career Executive Service Board, printing a copy, a house, a copy of the CSS 2016 Annual Report.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
Letter dated December 28, 2017 of Honorable Dato Arnold Dumac, Chipting IP, MR, and Consultant submitting the accomplishment report and initiative for calendar year 2017 of the Office of the Tribal Chipting IP, MR of Barangay Bisayen, Mila Estagum, Dabau del Norte.
The Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples.
Letter dated January 15, 2018 of Honorable Marlin S. Wenzislaw, Municipal Mayor, Sandat Santander Cebu submitting the report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation for the fourth quarter 2017 on assistance to disadvantaged municipalities under the LGSF.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 15, 2018 of Bernab Magallón, Municipal Mayor, Aldegría Cebu forwarding the quarterly report on the assistance of disadvantaged municipalities under LGSF for the quarter ended December 31, 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Letter dated January 16, 2018 of Undersecretary Eduardo M., Annual Officer in Charge, the ILG submitting the department's performance challenge fund, annual accomplishment report, and the fourth quarter progress report on PCF for calendar year 2017.
Local Government Committee.
Letter dated January 22, 2018 of Honorable Lisa Marie Durano Tistrigan, Municipal Mayor, Sogod Cebu transmitting the report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation for the quarter ended December 31, 2017 on assistance to disadvantaged municipalities under the LGSF.
Appropriations Committee.
Email dated January 20, 2018 of Neil Lemon Mediodia, PTO 2, Provincial Planning Office submitting the CMGP Kalisada LGSF fourth quarter on fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the province of Misamix Occidental.
Appropriations Committee.
Letter dated January 24, 2018 of General Ricardo Arbisaia, Retired Administrator, NIA submitting the fourth quarter report on NIA CARF irrigation component for calendar year 2017.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Letter dated January 24, 2018 of Jose Antonio Pintor, Municipal Mayor, Astura Cebu submitting the LGSF report on fund utilization and status of program implementation for the fourth quarter of 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Transmitting memo dated January 25, 2018 from Jose Isgana, Municipal Mayor, Santa Fe Cebu submitting the report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation on assistance to disadvantaged municipalities under the LGSF.
Transmital memo dated January 25, 2018 from Jose Isgana Municipal Mayor Santafe Cebu, submitting the report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation on assistance to disadvantaged municipalities and under the LGSF as of December 29, 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Letter dated January 27, 2018 of Attorney Gilier Asido, Administrator Intermurus Administration, submitting their financial reports for the year ending December 31, 2017.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Letter dated January 29, 2018 of Ace Stefan Binghai, Municipal Mayor, Balamban Cebu, submitting their assistance to disadvantaged municipalities under the LGSF report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation for the fourth quarter ended 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Letter dated January 13, 2018 of Attorney Glenn Pangapalan, General Manager, Philippine Fisheries Development Authority, submitting their statement of allotment obligations, utilizations and balances as of December 31, 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Letter dated February 1st, 2018 of Christian Ablan, Assistant Secretary and FOI Program Director, PCOO, submitting the 2017 FOI Annual Report.
Committee on Public Information.
Letter dated February 2, 2018 of Alan S. Romeo, Regional Director, Regional Office 11, DPWH, submitting to the House the monthly progress status report for the month of January 2018 of projects implemented by their office within the first legislative district of Dabau del Norte Province.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
First endorsement dated February 5, 2018 of Josephine T. Abing, Municipal Vice Mayor, Compostela Cebu, submitting the report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the LGSF for the quarter ended December 31, 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Email from Cebu Province submitting their, their Calzada CMGP Program Quarterly Report ending December 2017.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Email of Jessica Unsun, Supervising Agricultural Specialist, Special Projects Coordination Unit, Provincial Governor's Office, Agusan del Sur, submitting their CMGF Quarterly Financial and Fiscal Reports for the fourth quarter ending December 31, 2017.
Appropriations Committee.
Email of Engineers Pineda, OICPPO, Province of Pampanga, submitting the LGSF Calzada Report on Fund Utilization and Status of Program Project Implementation for the second, third and fourth quarter of 2017 of the Province of Pampanga.
Appropriations Committee.
Email from the Provincial Planning and Development Office of Nuevo Biscaya, submitting the, the report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation for the quarter ended December 31, 2017 of the Province of Nuevo Biscaya.
Appropriations Committee.
Report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the local government support fund assistance to disadvantaged municipalities for the quarter, fourth quarter of 2017 of Delagete Cebu.
Appropriations Committee.
Report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation for the quarter ended December 31, 2017 of Medellín Cebu of the LGSF.
Appropriations Committee.
2016 Annual Report of the Social Housing Finance Corporation.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
Letter of López T. Lim Jr., Municipal, Municipal Local Government Operations Officer, submitting the LGSF Report on Fund Utilization and Status of Program Project Implementation for the quarter ended December 31, 2017 of Ginatilan Cebu.
Appropriations Committee.
Committee Reports, Reports, Report Number 619 by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture on House Resolution 1722.
Rules Committee.
Report Number 620 by the Committee on Public Works and Highways on House Bill 7230.
Rules.
Report Number 621 by the Committee on Information and Communications Technology on House Bill 7233.
Rules.
Report Number 622 by the Committees on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee of Appropriation on House Bill 7236.
Rules Committee.
Report Number 623, 624, 625 and 626 by the Committees on Basic Education, Culture and the Committee of Appropriations on House Bill Number 7240, 7241, 7242 and 7243.
Rules Committee. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we open the privilege hour, we'd like to greet some guests in the gallery. In the gallery are the guests of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Reneo Abu. In the gallery are the guests, are the students of the College of Arts and Sciences from the University of Batangas, headed by the following professors, Ms. Elsie Untalan, Ms. Lanifel Manalo, Ms. Annie Marie Urig, and Mrs. Mary Ann Makatangay.
Your presence is hereby noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, the guests, we'd like to greet the guests of the Honorable Divina Grace Yu. These are the Association of Barangay Captains from the Municipality of Labangan, First District of Sangbuanga del Sur, headed by their ABC President, Barangay Chairman Jesus Dawuala.
Presence is noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Lastly, Mr. Speaker, are the guests of the Honorable Salvador Belaro of Unang Edukación Partilis, Unang Edukación Partilis, members of the Council of Management Educators and Practitioners of the Philippines, headed by its President, Dr. Edita Bunuan, and students of Westfield Science Oriented School, headed by Professor Ian Faronal and Ms. Melissa Jane Moreno.
Your presence is likewise note. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday and pursuant to our rules, I move that we hold the privilege hour.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Earl John Amante of the Second District of Agusan del Norte, who wishes to avail of the privilege hour.
No objection, motion is carried. Representative Amante is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues here at the House of Representatives, a pleasant afternoon to all. I address this august chamber regarding a matter of both personal and collective privilege. Ladies and gentlemen, three of my fellow Cabadbaranons, a place where I come from, are now languishing in jail, laying helpless behind bars owing to trumped up charges. Barangay Captain Judith Cueno of Del Pilar, her husband Rico Cueno, and Barangay Captain Alberto Baldo of Bayang, all in Cabadbaran City, Agusan del Norte, were taken into custody on January 28, 2018. Their arrest came after elements of the Cabadbaran City Police and Agusan del Norte Police Provincial Office raided their homes with search warrants issued by the Butuán City Regional Trial Court on hand and supposedly seized several firearms and explosives. Under normal circumstances, the operation would have been a welcome development. It would have been a stellar display of judicial and executive officers' integrity, discipline and proficiency. However, what really transpired could not have been farther from the truth. To begin with, the search warrants served upon the properties of the Cuenos and Barangay Captain Baldo were patently defective, both as regards the way it was procured as well as its substantive basis. Mr. Speaker, the rules of court and existing jurisprudence provide that the issuing court must have territorial jurisdiction over the place to be searched. This means that as a rule of thumb, search warrant applications shall be filed and can only be granted by the court having territorial jurisdiction where the crime has been committed. Only in extreme and compelling circumstances can the application be filed and acted upon by any court within the same judicial region where the crime was committed if the place of the commission of the crime is known or in any court within the judicial region where the warrant shall be enforced. Any search warrant issued outside these parameters are considered illegal and its implementation unreasonable. It is very curious why the search warrants against the Cuenos and Barangay Captain Baldo originated from the Butuán City Regional Trial Court Branch 2. For everybody's information, there are two courts in the City of Cabadbaran. There is the Regional Trial Court Branch 34 and the Municipal Trial Court in cities. This is why, following the pertinent rules, only these courts had the jurisdiction or authority to issue said search warrants. Mr. Speaker, the court apparently did not want to let the three detained know whether the police authorities had in fact proven the extreme and compelling circumstances to justify its deviation from the general rule. For everyone's information, it took the Regional Trial Court of Butuán City two weeks to give the detained Cabadbaranons their own copies of the search warrant application documents as well as of the transcript of the stenographic notes of the application proceedings. Even more repulsive is the fact that the Butuán Court also required a petition for the production of these same documents. The court previously refused a letter and a motion with the, with the same request for copies of the search warrant application documents. My dear colleagues, this is unheard of and highly irregular. These documents are the time, at the time already became public documents. The three detained had arrived to access to it and yet the court, the court played hardball and refused to timely give their respective copies of the bases for their defenses. This is certainly a clear violation of their fundamental right to due process, Mr. Speaker. Second, the search warrants may only be issued when there is probable cause that a crime had in fact been committed and that the objects of the crime would probably have been at the place to be searched. The Cuenos never possessed, much less owned, any firearm or explosive. For the many years that I have known them personally, they have not shown interest nor any need for any of these weapons. They had no known enemies that could have prompted them not only to possess firearms but likewise to hoard explosives. That is why the results of the raid operations were doubtful, nay incredulous as I see it. Expectedly, the search warrants do not state in categorical terms what led the police as well as the court to believe that the Cuenos possess, possess the firearms and explosive. Third, the law and the rules require that the search warrants described with particular, particularity as circumstances would allow the things and places to be searched. The search warrants issued against the Cuenos and Barangay Captain Baldo utterly failed to comply with this substantive requisite. Take the search warrant of the Cuenos for instance, it merely stated the residence to be in Barangay Del Pilar. The search warrant did not specify the street or the house number. In attempting to particularize the location, it mentioned of an attached vicinity sketch pertaining to the residence, not that of the Cuenos located in Barangay Del Pilar but of Barangay Captain Baldo in Barangay Bayang, which is several kilometers away. But despite this defect, patent on the face of the search warrant itself, the police officers proceeded with its implementation, turning their blind eyes to what was certainly obvious. The search warrant of Barangay Captain Baldo is another sad tale of woe. While it repeatedly mentioned of his residence, residential house and house as the place to be searched, the single motorcycle parked within the vicinity was included in the search where allegedly a hand grenade was discovered. The police officers exercised their indiscretion by considering the single motorcycle as an extension of the house. Likewise, the search warrants did not even state what kind of firearms they expected to seize from the raided premises. This only goes to show that the raiding police officers did not even conduct the proper investigation against the Cuenos and Barangay Captain Baldo. They were not certain as to whether or not the three detained in fact had the kind of firearms they expected to find in their homes. For all we know, the items that were seized during the operation were merely planted. But that is not all. The subject of the search warrants is even confusing. The caption of two search warrants uniformly authorized the search for firearms and ammunition on one hand, but its content authorized the seizure of explosives and incendiary devices on the other. It does not need a lawyer to know this obvious defect in a search warrant which authorized a search of one item but a seizure of a different item. What bothers me the most, Mr. Speaker, is the way that the search warrants were implemented against the homes of the Cuenos and Barangay Captain Baldo. Not only did the police execute patently defective search warrants, but even worse, they used unnecessary and excessive force in doing so. They broke every rule in the rulebook, so to speak, Mr. Speaker. Witnesses to this unfortunate event also confirmed that the raiding officers did not bother knocking and informing the occupants of the premises of their presence and purpose. Rather, they promptly knocked down the doors to the homes of the, of the three detained and proceeded to violently, violently search the same. Every inch of the raided houses was searched. What is revolting to common sense is the fact that the explosives that catapulted their charges to non-bailable offenses were found in places beyond our wildest imagination. For instance, Barangay Captain Baldo's hand grenade was found inside the utility box of his motorcycle. Probably a tool that he will be used, will be using in case his motorcycle bugs down. While the search warrant issued against him authorized the search only of his residential house, the police officers deemed his parked motorcycle as an extension of his residence. The case of Barangay Captain Cuenos even hilarious. The Nitro EM 1500 explosives, blasting cups and detonating cords were all found in her kitchen. Probably to be made as an ingredient in case she cooks her vian. Did the Cuenos and Barangay Captain Baldo even pose any objection to the city police operation? Mr. Speaker, what were they to do? Their homes had been violated and their persons threatened by armed individuals hiding under the cloak of their police uniforms. Most of whom wore bonnets that practically hid their faces. Overwhelmed and overpowered, what cannot be, one cannot be expected to put up an effective opposition. Mr. Speaker, every stage of the operation, from the procurement of the search warrant until its implementation, was tainted by corruption and evident malice. There was no just cause for the issuance of the search warrants. The Butuán City Court knew better of this. They had been, there had been no occasion that called for the raid, much less were there any legal basis for it. The city and provincial police of Agusan del Norte knew this and yet we now have three innocent persons languishing behind bars and traumatized by what easily could have, could be seen as a desecration of their homes. Where elements from other branches of government maliciously conspire, let the legislative rise and provide redress. Mr. Speaker, my distinguished colleagues, three of my fellow Cabadbaranons are suffering today in prison cells for no reason other than their political affiliation. Yes, this is nothing more than political harassment. And several elements of the judiciary and executive in our province allowed themselves to play part in this tasteless display of abused authority. They conspired to take away from three innocent persons their liberty and the security of their homes and they continue to do so by depriving these detained persons of any venue or way of redress. In the hopes of rectifying the plight. In the hopes of rectifying the plight of the Quenos and barangay captain Baldo, I am filing today a resolution calling for an inquiry into this highly irregular raid conducted by members of the Cabadbaran City and Agusan del Norte Provincial Police. I file this measure in the hope of unveiling the truth and imputing responsibility where and to whom it ought to fall. As the duly-elected representative of the Second District of Agusan del Norte, I am tasked to account not only for what I did to defend the constitutional rights to privacy of my constituents, but also for what I may have failed to do for the same purpose. I choose to do what is within my means. I cannot just allow to pass the violation of the sanctity of once-abode under the cloak of dubious search warrants, so despicable that only the unthinking beasts can orchestrate. These things happen, and I vow not to let it happen anymore. My dear colleagues, I seek for your support today. Let this most unfortunate incident in Cabadbaran be a takeoff point into this august chamber's reexamination of our current substantive and procedural laws on searches and seizures. There certainly are gaps in our laws on the matter. Those that led to the arrest and continued detention of three innocent Cabadbaranons, let this not happen to your people in your districts. Mr. Speaker, I will just reiterate this. Where elements from the other branches of government maliciously conspire, let the legislative rise and provide redress. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that to refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Amante to the Committee on Rules.
Objection. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we recognize the next to avail of the privilege, I would like to greet some guests in the gallery. In the gallery are the guests of the Honorable Rodante Marcoletta of Sagipartylis. They are Ms. Rose Abueg and Ms. Juvi Abueg.
Your presence is hereby noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, are the guests of the Honorable Saul Aragonés. These are school officials and students of the Dalobhassan ng lungsod ng San Pablo, headed by School Director Idilio Panaligan and Espirito Santo Parochial School of Santa Cruz, Manila, headed by Professor Elena Villarreal.
Your presence is noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Lastly, Mr. Speaker, are the guests of the Honorable Tom Villarin. These are certain organizations in the gallery. This are Anak Balayan, Samahan ng mga Mangingsda sa Kalatagan, Pambansang Katipunan ng mga Samahan sa Kanayuan, Institute of Social Order, Samahan ng mga Mangingsda sa Pulilyo, Quezon, Tambuyog Development Center, Worldwide Fund for Nature, Pangingsda Natin Gawing Tama, LGU of Agdangan, Quezon, headed by their mayor, the Honorable Radam Aguilar.
Your presence is noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Tom Villarin of Akbayan Partylis who wishes to avail of the privilege.
Objection. Motion is carried. Honorable Villarin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon ho sa ating lahat. Yesterday, Mr. Speaker, February 25th was a milestone in our history, not just because it marked the end of a two-decade dictatorship, but it also marks the day that the poorest of the poor in our society found in law what they lacked in life for the longest time. Mr. Speaker, this representation refers to our fisher folks, ang mangingsdang Pilipino, who have found a solid and comprehensive legal foundation for their lifestyle and livelihood in the passage of Republic Act 8550, commonly known as the Philippine Fisheries Code of 1998. Tomorrow, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, we mark yet another milestone in our national policy on fisheries. In 2015, amendments were made and passed by the 16th Congress through RA 10654 as a deliberate effort to prevent, deter, and eliminate illegal, unreported, and unregulated fishing. Such amendments to the Philippine Fisheries Code were made due to the sheer gravity and adverse impacts of illegal, unreported, and unregulated fishing, not only to the small fisher folks, but also to our marine ecosystems. In 2014, we were given a yellow card by the European Union. A yellow card is short of a trade sanction of our fisheries exports. This was also one of the reasons that we have to make our legal system compliant with international fisheries standards. But prior to this legal system, Mr. Speaker, it has been public knowledge that our fishery habitats have been succumbing to degradation. What I mean, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, are the following. Seagrass beds, which are important fishery habitats, like mangroves and coral reefs, they also serve as nursery grounds for fish and crustaceans. It is believed that large sea animals like the dugongs and sea turtles found in areas with relatively sizable seagrass beds. Of the 978 square kilometers of seagrass that remained in 1994, about half have been either lost or severely degraded during the past five decades or so. On coral reefs, coral reefs serve as spawning grounds for our fish and crustaceans, but reef fisheries have been estimated to directly contribute to around 15% to 30% of total national municipal fisheries production. But alas, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, only less than 1% remains in excellent condition. Mangroves. Mangroves serve as nursery grounds for fish, prawns, and crabs, among others. Mangrove forests also serve as protection for coastal areas from storm surges, strong waves, and typhoons. It is estimated that there are 248,813 hectares of mangrove forest in the Philippines, but this is down from the 450,000 hectares in 1914. The rapid conversion of mangroves into shrimp ponds between the 1960s and the 70s reduced significantly our mangrove forest cover. Many of these converted mangroves have remained idalands. Malina Odinpo, Mr. Speaker, na ang pagkasira ng mga likas yaman pangisdaan ay dulot ng mapangabusong gawain, hindi ng maliliit na mangingsda, kundi ng malalaki at establisadong industriya na kadalsay lumalabag sa mga alituntuning na kasaad sa ating batas. Ito po ang tinatawag natin 'yung commercial fishing industry. Data from the Department of Agriculture Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources show that 10 of the 13 fishing grounds in the country have been heavily exploited. Figure 1 shows that Kamiggin Waters, Iligan Bay, and the Makahalar Bay located in Mindanao are the only areas in good condition. Figure 2, the slide, shows that our fishing grounds have already been overfished since 1987, revealing that all major fishing bays in the Philippines have been heavily exploited, including Manila Bay, San Miguel Bay, Honda Bay, and Iliana Bay, with over 70 fisher folk per kilometer competing for such marine resources. At dahil magmula pa noon ay halos sa idnapo ang ating mga pangisdaan, hindi katakatak na ang ating mangingsda ay lugmok sa kahirapan. Statistically, our fisher folks are considered to be the poorest of the poor, with 41.2% living below poverty line in 2006, increasing by 41.3% in 2009, and now 34% in 2015. Most of these poorest fisher folks are found in regions 5, 10, and 11. This low income is attributed to the declining fish cuts, down from 20 kilograms per day, which was the average cuts during the 70s, to an estimated 4.76 kilograms per day. Kung gaano po, kakaunti ang nahuhuling isda, ganun din naman po 'yung kapalit na kinikita ng ating mga mangingsda. Ngayon po, bukod sa kakunti na ang isdang nahuhuli, pagkadami-dami din po ng mga pang-aabusong at paglabag ng ilang malalaking mangingsda o mga commercial fishers na siyang pumapatay, hindi lamang sa mga pangisdaan, kundi maging sa kabuhayan mismo ng maliliit na mga mangingsda. It is estimated that as early as 2000, the Philippines was losing $66.2 million to dynamite fishing. In 2013, as was cited in Executive Order 154, we are losing around $700 million from poaching, according to the PNP Maritime Group. And according to the Department of Foreign Affairs, we are losing $90 million from poaching in the West Philippine Sea alone back in 2015. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, this representation is citing all these reasons to remind us why the 1998 Fisheries Code needed to be amended in 2015. While most of this data was drawn from the past, we have yet to see significant improvements at present with regards to the amendments we made to the Fisheries Code in 2015. Let me cite such examples. First, the Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources Protection and Law Enforcement Group recorded a total of 649 apprehensions over the last two years. In 2016 and 2017, the highest recorded violations were still unauthorized fishing, the intrusion of fishing vessels within municipal waters, dynamite fishing, and the use of active fishing gears in municipal waters, including the hullboat-hullboat and bottom troll fishing. While we note that the efforts of our law enforcement agencies saw this rise in apprehensions, the fact remains that there are still a lot of violations in our fisheries laws. At kung patuloy ang paglabag sa batas, ibig sabihin po ay may kakulangan sa pagpapatupad nito. Kaya naman po, balak kong maghain ng isang resolusyon upang siasatin ang pagpapatupad ng ating pamahalaan sa batas tungkol sa pangisdaan. Napapanahon na po na 'yung ating Fisheries Code kaakibat ng mga pagamayda nito nun 2015 ay muling balikan. Sa dulo po ng ating pagsisisiasat, ang panawagan naman natin ay tapusi na ang illegal fishing. Alam po natin na bukod dun sa pagkasira ng ating mga marine ecosystems, ang talagang tinatamaan dito ay ang livelihood ng ating maliliit na mangingsda. Unang-una na po ang panawagan ng kinatawa na ito ay mahigpit natin ipagbawal ang hullboat-hullboat at bottom troll. Alam niyo po, itong sistema ng illegal fishing, kahit na po ay illegal po siya, ay isa sa pinaka-recorded na mga illegal fishing activities, even if we have already implemented or passed the Fisheries Code. Kailangan din po na pagibayuhin natin ang kakayanan ng ating pamahalaan sa pamamagitan po ng pagtayo ng isang departamento o kagawaran ng Fisheries and Aquatic Resources. Sa tingin po natin, bilang an arkepelago, bilang isang bansa na kung saan napakalawak ng ating coastal municipal waters, kailangan kong protektahan itong ating mga karagatan, lalong-lalo na po na ngayon ay meron po tayong mga marine resources beyond our economic exclusive zone. At suportahan din po natin ang ating mga komunidad ng mga maliliit na mga mangingsda. Kailangan po sisisiasatin natin ang naging implementasyon ng mga management and rehabilitation plan dun po sa mga degraded fishing grounds. Sinasabi po natin ito dahil sa kasalukuyan, talagang wasak na wasak na po ang karamihan ng ating mga fishing grounds na kung saan noon ay pinagkokunan ng ating maliliit na mga mangingsda ng kanilang kabuhayan. Pangalawa, kailangan din siasatin natin kung ano pang mga batayang social services na kinakailangan ng ating maliliit na mangingsda, gaya ng mga fisher folk settlements at 'yung kaakibat na livelihood programs, lalong-lalo na kung may off-season. Alam po natin na ang pangisda ay hindi o iyan 12 months or 24 hours na hanap-buhay. Meron lang ho na season na kung saan sila ay pwedeng mangisda. Pangatlo po, kailangan din siasatin 'yung ginawang mandato na magkaroon ng municipal water delineation. Alam po natin na isinabatas ang Philippine Fisheries Code, kailangan 'yung ating ahensya na mga pamahalaan kay ng Namriya, ng DNR, ay gumawa ng municipal waters delineation. Kailangan ding tanungin kung ano na ang nangyari dito. Pangapat, kailangan din po nasisisiasatin natin 'yung kooperasyon ng ating mga local government units hingil sa pagprotektah ng ating 15-kilometer municipal waters. Isa pong nakakalungkot na balita na marami din pong mga local chief executives ang siyang nagmamay-ari ng mga commercial fishing vessels na siyang nagva-violate din po ng ating Philippine Fisheries Code. So kailangan din po natin siasatin tingnan kung gaano na ba ang naging kooperasyon ng ating mga local government units. Before I end my speech, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, I would like to share a short story of success. In 2009, the municipality of Romblon set a praise-worthy precedent in delineating its municipal waters through a comprehensive municipal fisheries ordinance. This has been widely considered by fisheries-related NGOs as a success story, as it is a model worth emulating both in process and as it is a model worth emulating both in process and the end product. All stakeholders, the local government unit, the NGOs, the fishing communities, the business sector, et cetera, took part in the labor of such ordinance and now has reaped its fruits. Kung nagawa po ito sa Romblon, kaya po itong gawin sa ibang lugar. Marahil, meron pa po kayong mga kwento at aral na nais ibahagi. Sana po ay maiparating din natin sa gobyerno dahil nasa kamay nila, hindi lamang ang kapalaran ng ating mga mangingsda, kundi ang kapangyarihan upang magkatotoo ang mga layunin ng ating mga batas. My dear colleagues, we have a saying, "Give man a fish, you feed him for a day. Teach a man how to fish, and you feed him for a lifetime." But without any fish to catch and without catching those who are illegally fishing them, you may have just condemned all people to hunger and poverty for life. Sana po huwag nating sayangin ang pagkakataong ito. Kailangan po nating ipagpatuloy 'yung mga reforma na hingil sa ating fisheries law. Kung hindi po, ang ating poorest of the poor and even our marine ecosystems will completely vanish from us. Maraming salamat at mabuhay ang mangingsdang Pilipino.
Mister Speaker, majority leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Tobey Chanco's first interpellation.
Objection. Honorable Tobey Chanco is recognized. Please proceed.
Mister Speaker, may I know if the gentleman from Akbayan is willing to yield to some questions?
Gladly, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, first of all, I would like to commend the gentleman from Akbayan for a very good speech, a timely speech, and a speech that I fully agree with, no? I would like to inform the Speaker and the gentleman from Akbayan that in the past, I have filed bills to create a Department of Fisheries. Pero dahil wala kong nangyari in past congresses, hindi ko na-file ngayon, no? Gusto kong malaman kung ang ating kasama ay nag-file ho ngayon ng isang bill para sa creation ng Department of Fisheries.
Uh, sa, for the information po, ang ating August body, this representation has already filed the bill, the DUFAR bill. Although this would not be the topic that I would discuss, no? But again, this representation would also gladly seek the support of our colleagues with regards to this legislation that this representation has filed.
Yes, so magandang malaman yan. At ito baho ay umusad na? Nagbaho ng committee hearing tungkol sa bill nito?
Uh, sa ngayon po ay hindi baho ito umuusad dahil una po gumawa ng posisyon ang Department of Agriculture. Nung simula ay suportado nila 'yung panukalang batas, pero biglang nagbago ang isip ng DA at sinabi nilang hindi nila, uh, ngayon suportado 'yung creation ng DUFAR.
Uh, Mister Speaker, Honorable Villarin, ang ibig niyo ma-sabihin ay 'yung liderato ng Department of Agriculture ngayong administration? O nakaraang administration ba?
Uh, 'yung kasalukuyan pong administration, no? Ang nagsabi na, na hindi nila priority legislation itong DUFAR.
Ano ho kaya ang dahilan? Dahil sabi nga natin eh, alam naman natin na openly, diba ho, gustong proteksyonan ng Department of Agriculture, 'yung Benham Rice, na sinasabi nilang susunod na panggagalingan ng uh, yamang dagat ng ating mga kababayan. So ano ho kaya, ano ho ang naging dahilan kung bakit nila um, hindi sinasangayunan 'yung inyong napakagandang panukala na magkaroon ng isang departamento para sa Fisheries and Aquatic Resources?
Uh, batay ho dun sa kanilang inisyal na position paper, ay ang pananaw lang nila na magkicreate ito ng bagong burokrasya, uh, at kumbaga ito ay sasagka dun sa ginagawang rationalization plan uh, ng gobyerno na kung saan kailangan daw paliitin 'yung burokrasya at huwag ng magpalaki pa ng burokrasya. At ang pananaw din na sa ngayon daw ay 'yung BIFAR kaya naman daw gawin 'yung mandato ng, uh, panukalang Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources.
Uh, ang pangalawa ho ay talagang sangayon ho ako sa ating kasama, Mister Speaker, na talagang hindi ko maintindihan kung papaanong 'yung hullbot na bawal at nag-aagri baho ang ating kasama na ang hullbot ang pinaka-destructive sa lahat ng forms ng illegal fishing.
Well, unang-unang po 'yung hullboat-hullbot na tinatawag, ito po ay talagang destructive in the sense na ito po ay sinusuyod 'yung, 'yung bottom, no? Uh, so kumbaga hinahatak ng isang fishing vessel, uh, three tons on the average, no? At kadalasan po ay nagagamit to sa mga less than seven faton, no? Na mga municipal fishing grounds. And dun po sa mga apprehensions, no? Uh, kadalasan po 'yung mga nahuhuli na, na mga fishing vessels ay itong hullboat-hullbot, no? So ibig sabihin, kahit pinagbawal na ito ng BIFAR, no? At 'yung mga, uh, lisensya or 'yung pagbibigay, no? Nang license dun sa gear na yan ay bawal, ibig sabihin hindi na yan nilisensya, ay patuloy pa rin na nangyari. So ito'y batay dun sa mga datos, no? 'Yung mga apprehensions made, no? At, uh, hindi pa dito kasama 'yung mga hindi nahuhuli. Kasi alam po natin na ang ating mga bantay dagat ay kulang ho 'yung kagamitan, no? At sila ay nakadepende lang sa PNP. Kung magkaroon ng citing ng mga illegal fishers, kailangan pa nilang tawagin 'yung PNP. At kadalasan ay very late 'yung response ng PNP at nakakatakas 'yung mga illegal, uh, commercial fishers. So, so 'yung nabanggit kong mga apprehensions, uh, mga six hundred, uh, plus, no? Six hundred sixty-four, uh, six hundred forty-nine, uh, yun lang ho 'yung parang, uh, mga nahuli. Pero ang, ang mga reported, no? Nung mga violations ay napakarami, no? At, uh, yun po 'yung masaklap do'n, no? Na mas marami pa 'yung mga hindi nahuhuli na mga, uh, illegal, uh, fishing, no? Na ginagawa dun sa mga municipal waters.
Yes, uh, Mister Speaker, for, for the record, no? Um, talagang ako ay, um, buo ang suporta ko diyan sa laban sa hullbot. Dahil alam ko kung gaano ka-destructive 'yung hullbot na yan. Dahil alam niyo naman 'yung nabotas, nandyan ho ang mga marginal fishermen at nandyan din ho 'yung mga commercial fishermen. Isa lang ho ang sinasabi nun dalawang grupong ito, na normally ho itong grupong ito, Mister Speaker, ay hindi nagkakasangayon. Pero pag sinabi mo, pag tinanong mo sila kung ano ang pinaka-destructive o bakit humihina ang huli niyo, tanungin niyo ang, um, municipal fisherman na three gross tons and below ang sasagot niya hullbot. Kausapin mo 'yung commercial fisherman ang sasagot niya ay hullbot. Ang nakakapagtaka, at ito nadiskubre ko mismo, eh, na talagang nag-ooperate pa 'yung hullbot kahit, um, bawal na ho. Ang nadiskubre kong mga paraan, nung una, ang ginagawa niyan is hindi ko, hindi ako makapaniwala na sila'y nakakapagdispatyo. Diba ho, uh, Mister Speaker, uh, Honorable, uh, my honorable colleague? Diba ho, bago, baka bago makailis ang isang bangka o isang lansya, kailangan niya ho magdispatyo sa coast guard at dapat ho siyang inspeksyonin ng coast guard, diba ho?
Uh, ganun ho 'yung proseso, pero kadalasan nga ho dahil limited din 'yung capacity or 'yung, 'yung coast guard natin, no? Ay napakalawak 'yung kailangang bantayan. So most of the time, ay, uh, alam naman ho natin na 'yung mga commercial fishers na yan while registered dun sa regional ng BIFAR, no? Ay, kumbaga dun lang yan nag-ooperate, no? Within certain municipal waters and neighboring municipal waters. So ibig sabihin mismo 'yung mga residente, mismong mga mangingsda, no? Ay kakilala din nila 'yung sino 'yung mga commercial fishers. Kasi una po, uh, 'yung mga commercial fishers na, I mean, hindi nagva-violate dun sa ating mga municipal waters, alam naman natin yan na hindi yan dun sa malalapit o karatig bayan, no? So ang kadalasan talaga ang nakikita na mga major, no? Na mga violations ay supposedly dun lang din sa region or sa bay, no? Na kung saan, uh, we should have been protecting our municipal waters. Uh, meron lang mga sitwasyon, no? Na may mga commercial fishing vessels na pumupunta, ibig sabihin galing sa malalayo, pumupunta dun sa isang area o isang bay. Pero bibihira ho yun, kasi ang logic bakit 'yung isang commercial fishing vessel uh, pupunta ka dun sa isang munis, uh, I mean, isang bay area na gagastos ka ng napakalaki, no? So ibig kong sabihin, uh, most of the violators are found within the neighboring municipalities or neighboring area, uh, dun ho sa mga fishing grounds na nabanggit natin. So the question, uh, bakit ho nangyayari ito? I think one of the reasons is that 'yung atin-hung municipal waters ay basically ang, ang kanyang delineation is political. When we talk about marine resources, uh, hindi ho dapat na parang maglalagay tayo ng boundary. Case in point, 'yung isang municipyo, municipality ay maganda 'yung kanyang protection, 'yung kanyang, uh, ordinance, no? So ibig sabihin tumataas 'yung kanyang fish, uh, or mga marine resources, no? Then here comes, uh, commercial fisher or illegal fishers, no? From the other municipalities na hindi gumagawa ng proteksyon. So ibig lang sabihin, 'yung mga municipyo na kung saan talagang serioso sila sa proteksyon ng kanilang municipal waters would be frustrated, no? Because if the neighboring municipality or an overlapping municipal waters ay wala namang proteksyon, so parang lumalabas na wala ding silbi 'yung kanilang ginagawa. So, so I think in the delineation ng mga municipal waters, especially in overlapping municipal waters, we have to make a policy decision, uh, with regards to how do we treat, no? So ibig kong sabihin, while it's the LGOs, the municipal governments that is primarily mandated, no? To protect the municipal waters, pero paano kung walang proteksyon na ginagawa? Ano bang sanctions? Or ano bang iba pang mga pamamaraan na polisiya na talagang gagawin nila ito? 'Yung dati may iniisip na panukala na 'yung municipal waters isama natin sa computation ng internal revenue allotment, no? So ibig sabihin, kung may incentive 'yung isang, uh, LGO dahil nadagdaghan 'yung kanyang ira dahil meron siyang municipal waters, gagamitin niya ang dagdag na ira para proteksyonan. So 'yan lang po 'yung mga ilang mga policy interventions. Pero again, uh, we have to subject this to further discussions at sana mapaloob ito dun sa discussion ng isang Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources na panukala. So yun po 'yung nakikita ng representasyong ito.
Uh, Mister Speaker, um, 'yung hullbot kasi ang, ang nakita ko nitong huli, um, for the information of the, uh, Honorable Representative from Akbayan, ang nakita ko ho nitong huli ay 'yung mga dating ang, uh, um, certificate of fishing gear license nila ay Danish chain hullbot. Ang ginamahon nila ay pinalitan nila ng, um, fishing method supposedly, ng fishing gear supposedly. Pero pagdating nila doon sa, sa fishing ground, ganun pa rin ang ginagawa nila, no? Um, ito ay natuklasan ko by accident, uh, Mister Speaker, uh, Honorable colleague. Ito ay natuklasan ko by accident dahil, um, kung, uh, hindi ko alam kung natatandaan niyo 'yung, nung nagkaroon ng bagyo nun Desyembre, at may nawalang mga mangingsda doon sa May Turtle Island. So, um, nung nagpunta sa tanggapan ng mayor, 'yung mga pamilya ng mga nawawalang mga mangingsda, tinanong sila ano pa ang, uh, um, klase ng palakayan ninyo? Ang sabi nila ay hullbot. So, so tinanong namin, papaano naging hullbot yan? Eh bawal na ho 'yung hullbot. Dun ho pinaliwanag na ang nakasulat doon sa, um, certificate of fishing vessel gear license ay ibang pamamaraan, ngunit ang aktwal na ginagawa ay hullbot. So yun ho ang gusto kong iparating sa akin, colleague. Ngayon meron na ho tayong batas, no? At 'yung hullbot na sinasabi 'yung destructive eh dapat natin mahinto kaagad. Ano ho sa tingin, kayo ba ay nagmumukahi na magkaroon ng investigasyon in aid of legislation? O ano ho ang inyong mukahi para maenforce natin? Or are you asking the Oversight Committee to look, to exercise their oversight functions? Kasi dapat talaga, ito may, may, may nakita ho na ho tayo na flaw dito sa batas? O kung paanong linulusutan tong batas na to? Um, paano ho ang inyong, uh, panukala? O paano ho ang inyong balak para agawa nating masulusunan itong bagay na ito?
Well, uh, Mister Speaker, I also affirm, no? The observation of my colleague na talagang itong hullbot-hullbot, no? Eh, kung baga, iba 'yung nirirehistro na fishing gear, active fishing gear, pero hullbot-hullbot pa rin ang ginagamit. So ang panukala, ang representasyong ito po ay sa tingin na kailangan tayong, well, maghahain po ako ng resolusyon, no? Para imbestigahan, no? Itong, uh, particularly itong mga illegal, uh, unreported, unregulated na fishing methods. Kasi alam niyo po, kasalukuyan, 'yung atin pong mga partner na countries, export countries, no? Ay minumonitor tayo dito sa compliance natin sa ating fisheries law, no? And in fact, I think the European Union is now doing a silent investigation, no? About this, uh, mga violations pa rin ng ating fisheries law. And if it is found out na talagang rampant pa rin 'yung IOUF, ay posible tayong diretang bigyan na lang ng red card. Ibig sabihin ito, we have around twelve billion pesos worth of exports, no? At tatamaan ho tayo dito, no? And I think IO, no? Uh, which is our major, uh, export partner, uh, would be interested, no? For us to do an investigation, look into the implementation of the Fisheries Code amendments. And, uh, we definitely, this representation, Akbayan will file a resolution uh, on that matter, Mister Chair. Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, eh, that's all, Mister Speaker. Um, maraming salamat ho, Honorable Tom Villarin. At, uh, ako'y buong, buong, bibigay ko ho ang aking buong suporta sa inyong panukala at ako'y nagpapasalamat dito sa inyong advokasiya na ito. Na talagang kinakaila, ibig sabihin matagal lang kinakailangan pa, pero mukhang dapat tutukan natin para siguradong maipatupad ng maayos at mahintunaho ang pagsira sa ating karagatan. Maraming salamat ho, Honorable Villarin.
Maraming salam din, kagalang-galang na Tobey Chanco. At maraming salamat, uh, distinguished speaker and colleague.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, with no other, with no other interpreter, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Villarin and the interpolations to the Committee on Rules. So move, Mister Speaker.
No objection. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, before we recognize the next to avail of the privilege, I'd like to greet your guests in the gallery. In the gallery are the guests of the Honorable Arielle Casila Vanac Pawi Spartiles. These are Nestor Libico, Marisa Cabal Howe, and Dean Lacandazo.
Your presence is noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Antonio Tinio of Act Teachers Spartiles who wishes to avail of the privilege.
Objection. Motion is carried. Objection, motion is carried. Congresswoman Tinio, she is very recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker at mga kapwa kinatawan, tumitindig ako ngayong gabi upang suportahan ang panawagan para sa makabuluhang salary increase ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno. Kabila ang ating mga public school teachers, mga non-teaching personnel, at lahat ng iba pa. Ito ay panawagang, panahon ng dinggin ng Duterte Administration, lalo na ngayong nasa kalagitnaan ito, sa pamumuno ng DBM, ng konsultasyon sa mga ahensya upang buin ang panukalan 2019 budget. Matagal ng target ng mga global financial institutions na nagtatakda ng patakaran pang ekonomiya ng Republika ng Pilipinas, tulad ng International Monetary Fund, World Bank, at Asian Development Bank, ang pagkontrol at pagsupil sa sweldo, benepisyo, at kasiguruhan sa trabaho ng mga kawanee sa pampublikong sektor. Sa lingwahe ng neoliberal na public administration, tinatawag itong, quote, "Managing the Public Sector Wage Bill," unquote. Sabi ng IMF, "Effective management of wage bill spending is needed to ensure that the desired public services are delivered in a cost-effective and fiscally sustainable manner." Sa ganitong balangkas, binabantayan ng mga economic managers ang porsyento ng budget na inilalaan sa personal services o PS kada taon, upang matiyak di humano na hindi kakainin ng pasweldo ang kalakhan ng pambansang budget at may sapat na pondo para sa mga programa at proyektong tutugon sa mga pangangailangan ng publiko. Magandang pakinggan at tila makatuwiran sa papel, ngunit iba ang realidad. Sa Pilipinas, ipinatutupad ang ganitong patakaran sa loob ng mahigit tatlong dekada sa konteksto ng pagbayad sa dambohalang utang panlabas bilang pangunahing prioridad ng gobyerno, malaganap na pandarambong at graft and corruption ng mga mataas na opisyal, papalaking budget para sa gera at panunupil sa maralita at mamamayang lumalaban, at kabuhang kakapusan ng pondo para sa mga serbisyong panlipunan. Ayon sa IMF, maaring ipatupad ang pagmaneho sa public sector wage bill sa pamamagitan ng sumusunod, pagkontrol sa pagtaas ng sweldo ng mga kawanee sa gobyerno, paglimita sa mga benepisyong kanilang tinatanggap, at pagpapatupad ng labor flexibility sa hanay ng pampublikong sektor. Sa Pilipinas, isinabatas ang legal framework para sa pagkontrol ng public sector wage bill sa ilalim ng administrasyon ni Pangulong Cory Aquino sa kalagitnaan ng debt crisis noong dekada 80. Tampok dito ang sumusunod. Una, Executive Order 180, o ang batas kaugnay sa public sector unionism. 1987, sinabatas ito. Nananatili ang EO 180 bilang batas na gumagabay sa public sector unionism sa bansa. Sa kabila ng garantya ng 1987 Constitution, Article 13, Section 3, "The state shall guarantee the rights of all workers to self-organization, collective bargaining and negotiations, and peaceful and concerted activities, including the right to strike in accordance with law." Bigyan natin andin sa konstitusyon, ah, the rights of all workers. So, public and private sector dapat, no? Collective bargaining and negotiation, at saka the right to strike, no? 'Yan ang sabi sa konstitusyon. Ngunit sa EO 180, pinagkakait nito ang full union rights sa mga kawaning publiko. Partikular ang dalawang susing karapatan ng collective bargaining at right to strike. Kinikilala ang karaputang magunion ng mga kawanee sa gobyerno, ngunit hindi sila maaring makipagtawaran sa kanilang employer ng estado sa usapin ng sweldo at mga benepisyong pinansyal. Sabi nga, non-monetary benefits lamang ang pwedeng pag-usapan daw ng mga public sector unions. Hindi tulad ng mga public sector workers sa ibang bansa, hindi rin pinahingin tulutan ang EO 180 ang mga public sector unions na magwelga. Ang mga tagumpay nanakamit ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno sa pamamagitan ng public sector unionism ay sa kabila ng at hindi dahil sa mga limitasyon na itinatakda ng Executive Order 180. Sunod na batas, ang Republic Act 6656. Ito ang Governmentary Organization Law na isinabatas naman noong 1988. Ito ang pangunahing legal na instrumento para sa atake sa kasiguruhan sa trabaho ng mga kawanee sa gobyerno at naglatag ng balangkas para sa malawakang tanggalan. Naghawan din ito ng daan para sa malawakang kontraktualisasyon sa pampublikong sektor. Regular na ipinatutupad ng mga sumunod na administrasyon ang programang tanggalan, tulad ng rationalization sa bisa ng Executive Order Number 366 ni Pangulong Gloria Arroyo, at rising, rightsizing sa ilalim ni Pangulong Duterte. At sa panahong ito, ay lumaganap din ang outsourcing ng mga government services sa pribadong sektor at ang paggamit ng job order at contract of service sa hanay ng gobyerno. Pangatlong batas, Republic Act 6758. Ito ang Salary Standardization Law na isinabatas noong 1989. Ang pangunahing instrumento ng neoliberal na estado para kontrolin at panatiliing mababa ang sweldo at benepisyo ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno, na isabatas ito noong 1989 sa kabila ng malawakang pagtutol ng daan-daan libong mga kawanee ng gobyerno sa buong bansa, kabila ang mga public school teachers. Na alam natin, eventually, humantong ito sa nationwide strikes at hunger strike ng mga guro at nagresulta sa tanggalan ng libo-libong mga guro sa serbisyo noong dekada 90 na sila, naibalik sa serbisyo. Sa pamamagitan ng Salary Standardization Law, or SSL, itinatali ang sweldo at benepisyo ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno sa batas. Hindi kikilalanin maging ang pagtaas ng cost of living o ang ipinaglalaban ng mga public sector union. Tanging ang batas ang nagtatakda ng legal na kompensasyon. Taliwas ito sa umiiiral na batas sa pasweldo sa pribadong sektor, na nagbibigay ng puwang para sa taonang adjustment ng minimum wage alinsunod sa pagtaas ng cost of living. SSL din ang nagbigay ng legal na batayan para sa samutsaring disallowance ng DBM at KWA sa mga benepisyong naipanalo ng mga kawanee sa pamamagitan ng kanilang sama-samang pagkilos. Kasama na rito 'yung mga kasalukuyang pinaglalaban ng mga public school teachers na binabawasan o tinatanggal outright ang kanilang mga local allowance. Makikita ang bagsik at lupit ng SSL, kung babaybayin lamang natin ang kasaysayan ito. Matapos ang unang SSL noong 1989, sunod na nagpatupad ng salary increase ang gobyerno noong 1994, sa bisa ng Joint Resolution Number 1, 1994. Tapos nito, 15 taon ang lilipas bago maisabatas ang SSL 3, Joint Resolution Number 4, 2009, sa panahon na ni Pangulong Arroyo. Mula panahon ni Pangulong Ramos, SSL 2. Ang sunod na adjustment na ng SSL ay 2009. Sa pagitan nito, may mga ilang percentage increases lamang na ibinigay 10% noong year 2000 and 5% noong year 2001. Pero isipin natin 'yan, mahigit isang dekada na nakapako ang sweldo ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno sa bisa ng SSL. Malupit na wage freeze sa ilalim ni Pangulong Arroyo. Di makatarungan wage inequality naman ang tumampok sa Executive Order 201 ni Pangulong Noy Noy Aquino. Executive Order 201, 'yan ay madalas na tinatawag na SSL 4. Isa sa mga prinsipyo ng neoliberal na public sector wage bill management ay ang pagbenchmark ng sweldo ng gobyerno sa pribadong sektor. Ayon sa IMF, competitive compensation can be promoted through public and private sector wage comparisons. Sa madaling sabi, layuning salaminin ng gobyerno ang dipantay na estruktura ng pasweldo sa pribadong sektor na dikta ng merkado. Busabos na sweldo sa mga entry level at rank-and-file employees sa isang banda, at stratosperikong sweldo at benepisyo para sa mga pinuno at CEO ng mga korporasyon sa kabilang banda. Kinomission pa ng DBM sa ilalim ng Aquino Administration ang American consulting firm na Towers Watson para paghambingin ang sweldo sa gobyerno at pribado. Resultan ito ang salary schedule ng EO 201. Mas pinaburan, pinapaburan, mas pinapaburan ito ang mas mataas na opisyal ng gobyerno kesa doon sa rank-and-file employees na bumubuo sa malawak na mayorya ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno. Ang EO 201 ay nagpalakipas agap sa pagitan ng lowest and highest-paid government employees. Ang pinakamababang government employee ay binigyan lamang ng 22.98% increase sa sahod, from 9,000 to 11,000. Ang teacher 1 at nurse 1, 11.89% from 18,549 to 20,754. Samantala, para sa mga executive level positions, ang umento para sa kanila ay umaabot mula 76.96% para sa salary grade 25 hanggang sa 233.12% para sa salary grade 33, ang pinakamataas. Ito 'yung sweldo ng pangulo. Sinasalamin lang ng pinakahuling joke ni Pangulong Duterte, hanggang nitong pag-iisip, hindi pa raw sapat ang kanyang mahigit 200,000 kada buwan na sweldo. Dahil daw dalawa ang asawa niya, so at bising-bisi daw siya. So, dapat daw 1.5 million pesos kada buwan, at least, ang sweldo niya bilang presidente. So, 'yung, 'yung ideya na dapat mas mataas pa ang sweldo ng mga pinakamataas na opisyal ng gobyerno. Samantala, paulit-ulit naman, sina-Secretary Jokno ng DBM at Secretary Briones ng DEP Ed na sinasabi na mataas na ang kasalukuyang sweldo, na 20,000 naman ng mga public school teacher, kung ikokumpara daw sa private school teacher. Kaya, hindi raw priority ang salary increase para sa kanila. Build, build, build daw ang priority ng administrasyon. Sa madaling sabi, binawi na ni Pangulong Duterte ang una niyang pahayag na pagkatapos ng increase sa sundalo at pulis, isunod na raw ang increase sa public school teachers. Ayon sa huling pahayag ng malakanyang, hintay, hintay na raw muna ang full implementation ng EO 201. Madaling sabi, hanggang 2019, at pagkatapos ng isa na namang study, maaring mabigyan muli ng increase ang mga guro, no? Baka daw sa 2020. Debt crisis noong dekada 80-90, fiscal crisis noong year 2000. Build, build, build ngayon. Austerity noon, good governance ngayon. Ibat-iba ang dahilan ng ibat-ibang administrasyon upang ipagkait ng gobyerno sa mga kawanee. Nito ang diswelding, ang disyenteng sweldo sa kanila at kanilang mga pamilya. Ang neoliberal na pagkontrol sa public sector wage bill mula Administrasyon Cory Aquino hanggang Duterte alinsunod sa dikta ng IMF at iba pang mga, ah, mga global financial institutions, ang isang obyetibong dahilan kung bakit nakabaon sa utang ang maraming mga kawanee ng gobyerno. Hindi totoo 'yung sinasabi ni Secretary Briones na dahil daw sa lifestyle, sa maluhong lifestyle ng ilang mga guro at iba pang kawanee ng gobyerno, kaya nababaon sila sa utang. Sa totoo lang, sa buong bansa ngayon merong debt crisis, personal debt crisis, na dinaranas ang libo-libong mga kawanee ng gobyerno. Biktima sila ng mga private lending institutions, mga loan shark, na pawang naniningil ng napakataas na interes. Walang bail out para sa mga kawanee na ito. Sa halip, kinakaharap nila ang banta ng mga kasong legal, ang banta ng, ah, ng garnishment ng kanilang mga sweldo, at pinaka, ah, pinakamalala pa ang banta ng pagkatanggal sa government service. In fact, may mga kaso na, ng ganito. Mga public school teacher na nabaon sa utang sa loan shark, kinakasuhan usually sa profesya, professional regulation commission na tatanggalan ng lisensya na tatanggal sa government service. Dapat, sa totoo lang, unregulated ang, ah, ang pagpapa, ang, ah, pagpapautang ng mga private lending institutions sa mga napakaraming government employees at dapat imbestigahan ito ng Kongresong ito. Lumalapang lalo ang injustitia sa sistema ng pagpapasahod sa ating mga kawanee sa gobyerno ng pinasa ang Joint Resolution Number 1 ng kasalukuyang Kongreso sa ilalim ng kasalukuyang administrasyon na nagdobla sa sweldo ng mga sundalo, pulis, at iba pang military and uniform personnel ng walang kaakibat na salary increase para sa mga empleadong sibilyang. Lumikha ang Duterte Administration ng malubhang salary distortion o GAAP sa pagitan ng military and uniform personnel, MUP, at sibilyang kawanee. Ang isang kandidatong sundalo ay sumasahod na ng pinakamababang 18,587 a month. Samantala ngang kalakhan ng rank-and-file employees na may salary grade 1 hanggang 10 ay tumatanggap lamang ng 10,510 pesos hanggang 18,718 a month. Kahit pa pareho lang ang qualification o mas mataas pa nga ang qualification o mas matagal na sila na nagsisilbi sa gobyerno. Ang police officer 1 at ang isang private ay nakatatanggap na ng 29,668 kada buwan. Halos 10,000 ang diferensya sa 20,179 na sahod ng teacher 1, nurse 1, registrar 1, guidance counselor 1 sa ilalim ng third branch ng revised, ah, Salary Standardization Law. Sa mga kadahilanang ito, hindi humuhu pa ang panawagan ng ating government employees para sa kagyat na salary increase. Buli naming dinidiin ngayon ang pangangailangan para sa kagyat na makabuluhang umento sa sweldo ng mga ordinaryong kawanee. Silang mga guro, mga non-teaching personnel, mga nurse, social worker, mga clerk, utility workers, doctor, at iba pa, mga kawaning susi sa operasyon ng mga tanggapan ng pamahlaan, gayan ang mga kasama natin dito sa House of Representatives, sa plenary, ah, sa mga komite, at iba pa, ang kanilang sigaw, salary increase ngayon na hindi sa 2020. Ayon sa pag-aaral ng Ibon Foundation, ang isang pamilyang may 6 na miyembro ay nangailangan ng 1,119. ng one thousand one hundred nineteen pesos kada araw o thirty-three thousand five hundred seventy kada buwan upang mabuhay ng disente. Ngunit, ang isang teacher one hanggang teacher three ay sumasahod lamang ng halos twenty thousand hanggang twenty-four thousand kada buwan. Wala pa dito ang mga kaltas tulad ng GSIS, Phil Health, Pag-ibig. Ngahulugan, nakulang nakulang talaga ang kanilang sahod kada buwan upang matustusan ang mga pangangailangan ng kanilang pamilya, dagdag pa dito ang mga biglang gastos, salimbawa kapag nagkasakit. Hindi na dapat intayin ni Pangulong Duterte na matapos ang ikaapat na tranche ng SSL dahil kitang-kita naman natin ang epekto ng hindi sapat na sweldo ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno at pampublikong guro. Patuloy silang mahirapan dahil sa train, ang tax reform law ng kasalukuyang administrasyon dahil binawi naman ito ang ah additional take-home pay ko no? Noong nagkaroon ng bagong buwis sa petrolio na nagresulta sa inflation, ah tumas ang presyo ng bilhin at serbisyo at lalong tumataas ang cost of living. Makikitang nararapat lamang at makatuwira na singilin si Pangulong Duterte sa kanyang pangako na itaas ang sweldo hindi lamang na mga guro, kundi lahat ng mga manggagawa at kawanee ng gobyerno. Tunay nga ang napapanahon ang pagtaas ng sahod ng mga guro at iba pang kawanee ng gobyerno upang makaagapay sa pataas na bilihin at serbisyo. Kaya naman po ah kami sa makabayan ay may final na mga bill na sana ay dinggin sa lalong madaling panahon ng Kongresong ito, aksyonan ng Kongresong ito para itaas sa minimum na sixteen thousand kada buwan ang minimum na salary sa gobyerno, gawing thirty thousand a month ang sweldo ng mga teacher at nurse. At ah matugunan 'yung pangangailangang mailapit sa actual cost of living ang kanilang sweldo at ah maaddress 'yung distortion na nilikha ng ah pagdoble sa sweldo ng military and uniform personnel pay. Hinihikayat ko ang lahat ngayon na suportahan ang makatuwirang panawagan ng ating kasamahan na kawanee sa pamahlaan at isabatas sa pinakakagiya't na panahon ang salary increase para sa government employees. Bilang pangwakas, ang laban para sa kagiya't na pagtaas ng sweldo ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno ay bahagi lamang ng mas masaklaw at pangmatagalang laban para ilantad, labanan, baklasin at ibasura ang neoliberal na balangkas ng pagkontrol sa public sector wage bill na pinaihiral ng ibat-ibang administrasyon mula Aquino hanggang Duterte at para itaguyod ang karapatan sa disenting sweldo, kasiguruan sa trabaho at ganap na karapatan sa pag-uunyon ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Would ah before the Majority Leader goes to the next interpreter, would you entertain, would you indulge ah the Presiding Officer just to better understand the point that Honorable Tinio is raising?
Of course, it would be my honor, Mr. Speaker.
Just, just one observation because I listened intently to your questions, ah to your speech, Honorable Tinio. If I'm correct in what I heard, tagalugin ko na lang dahil tagalog mo 'yung pagbigay niyo ng inyong talumpate. Ang sinasabi po niyo noong panahon ni Cory Aquino, Presidente Cory Aquino, ah nagsimula 'yung pagsupil o hindi pagtaas ng sweldo ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga teacher, tama po ba ko? At ah sinabi mo nga na noong panahon ngayon, naais ng ating mga kawanee ng gobyerno, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga teachers na sana imbes na pigilan, ipeg 'yung sweldo ng mga teachers dun sa inflation o kaya 'yung pagtaas ng mga food or commodities, tama ba po ako 'yung sa observasyon ko?
Ah ah more or less tama po, no? Ang sinasabi po natin na noong panahon ni Cory Aquino, sa konteksto ng alam natin 'yan 'yung debt crisis baon sa utang, ang ah gobyerno noon at pangunahing priority ang debt servicing ay ah isinabatas po 'yung legal framework para ah kontrolin ang ah sweldo at mga benepisyo ng gobyerno. So binanggit nga po natin 'yung Executive Order 180. So kinilala 'yung public sector unionisin pero tinanggalan ang right to strike or di kinilala 'yung right to strike at tsaka 'yung ah ah right, full bargaining rights ng mga public sector union. So hindi tulad sa ibang bansa, sa ibang bansa po regularly nakikita natin sa balita, international news na may mga government employees, no, whether in first world countries or in developing countries na nagwe-welga sila, no? At kadalasan, ang usapin dito is sweldo, hindi ganyan sa Pilipinas. Tapos binanggit din natin 'yung batasari organization at tsaka 'yung salary standardization law. So yes, ganun po.
Yes, at ah dahil nga dun sa pagpigil na 'yan, ah matagal na panahon hong hindi nataasan ang sweldo ng mga public school teachers at hindi nakasabay sa pribadong sektor. Kaya nga 'yung panahon na 'yan, 'yung dekada na 'yan o dalawang dekadang interim na 'yan, mas tumas or malayong agwat ng sweldo ng pribadong sektor at sa public sektor. Kaya nga ho, sabi natin medyo humina ang ah kalidad ng edukasyon sa ating bansa dahil nga may migration ng mga teachers na magagaling sa private sektor. Tama po pa ang aking observasyon?
Ah tama po kayo na ang epekto noong batas, ah salimbawa noong SSL ay napako nga ang ah pagtaas so hindi na ah basta-basta maaaring mag-implement ng salary increase or increase sa benepisyo ng mga, hindi lang po public school teachers, kundi lahat ng kawanee ng gobyerno, na walang batas, no? So katulad ng binanggit natin, ang pinakatampok dito from ninety-four, ang susunod na SSL, strictly speaking, two thousand nine na.
Yes.
Fifteen years, no? Ngayon, ah hindi lang po ako sangayon dun sa observation niyo na may panahon na mas mataas ang sweldo ng mga private school teachers sa public school teachers. Kasi historically, ah for various reasons, ay mababari naman ang sweldo ng mga private school teachers. Isang basic na dahilan dito dahil malaganap ang kontraktualisasyon ah sa private schools, hindi tulad ng sa public schools.
Ang akin lang po gusto ko lang malaman 'yung, 'yung train of thought po niyo na noong una naais nating makumpara sa pribadong sektor dahil nga sa pribadong sektor nagpa-fluctuate or tumataas ang sweldo nila sang ayon sa cost of living. Ngayon naman dumating sa panahon na tinabla na sila o pinantay na sa private sektor, hindi pa rin tayo maligaya. Parang nag-iiba kada dekada ang pulisiya, ah 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 'yun naman lang ho akin, ah gusto ko lang malaman kung ano ba talaga ang basihan natin dito, 'yung ah basta tataasan na lang?
Okay.
O meron ba tayong pagbabasihan ang pagtaas? O depende na lang kung ah anong argumentong ibigay ng administrasyon? 'Yun lang po, ah if you want to respond to that, go ahead.
Naintindihan ko po 'yung ah 'yung punto niyo na ah tama nga ba na ah kung noon na pag-iwanan ang sweldo ng public school teacher eh ngayon po ay mas mataas na ang sweldo ng public school teacher kesa sa ah private school teacher? Ah sa totoo lang po, ang tindig po ng kinatawang ito ay iisa ang laban ng mga public school teacher at actually ng mga, lahat ng mga sumusweldo sa ating lipunan, no? So whether public or private sector worker or employee, no, ah problema po nila na hindi nakasasapat sa cost of living ang kanilang sweldo, no? So hindi po natin tinatanggap 'yung balangkas na isinasalaksak satin ng IMF, World Bank, ADB at iba pa na i-benchmark ang sweldo ng public sector sa private sektor, no? Eh dahil busabos nga ang sweldo sa private sektor, no? So siguro po, ang bottom line, ang tamang balangkas para sa atin ay 'yung ah cost of living at disenting antas ng pamumuhay. 'Yun lang po, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for indulging the Presiding Officer, Congresswoman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Tinio together with its interpolations to the Committee on Rules. So move.
No objection, motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour for another hour. So move.
No objection, the motion is carried. Privilege hour extended for one more hour.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of Act Teachers' Party List who wishes to build the privilege hour.
No objection. Congresswoman Brosas is hereby acknowledged. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ah, Mr. Speaker, ako po ay mula sa kinatawan ng Gabrielle Women's Party List. Ginawang speaker at mga kapako kinatawan, tumitindig ako ngayon bilang kinatawan ng kababaihan, bata at bayan para sa kapayapaan at kaunlaran ng mamamayang Pilipino, ngayon at sa mga susunod na henerasyon. Kaysang sambayanan, hinihimok at hinahamon tayong mga mambabatas na tumindig para sa isang kapayapaang nakabatay sa kaunlaran at hustisyang panlipunan. This representation took part in a gathering of mass organizations in Abra last week for a discussion aimed at understanding the current status of advancing human rights and development work in their communities. Tunguhin ito ang matugunan ang mga balakin sa pagkakamiit ng kapayapaan at seguridad sa probinsya ng Abra. Katuwang ang Center for Development Programs in Cordillera at Abra Human Rights Alliance. Mga institusyong pangkaunlaran at tagapagtaguyon ng karapatang pantao sarhiyon. Nagbahagi ang mga organisasyon ng mga magbubukid at mga katutubo mula sa mga komunidad ng tubo. Dolores, bukay at Malibkong sa Abra ng kanilang mga kalagayan. Kawalan ng batayang serbisyong panlipunan at pagharap sa kabi-kabilang pandarahas, pagpatay at iba pang porma ng paglabag sa karapatang pantao. In twenty fifteen, the Philippines was one of more than one hundred ninety member countries of the United Nations which committed to the seventeen Sustainable Development Goals. A fifteen-year program aimed to end extreme poverty, fight inequality and injustice, and resolve climate change. World leaders have declared their roles in achieving these goals of a more prosperous, equitable, and sustainable world. Contrary to this commitment, the Philippine government has not worked collectively with its people. Through People's Organizations and their partner humanitarian development and advocacy institutions, the Filipinos work collectively towards the realization of prosperity, peace, and security. However, it is unfortunate that these formations are labeled as unfriendly rebels and at worst as members or supporters of terrorists. Leaders of People's Organizations are continually being maligned, politically vilified, threatened, and at risk of being jailed, assassinated, or forcibly disappeared. This puts the country development agenda, policies, and programs into question. The beginning of the Duterte administration was full of promises in resolving the most pressing issue of the country: extreme poverty, labor contractualization, and flour wages, lack of genuine agrarian reform, drugs, traffic, climate change, mining, armed conflict in Mindanao, and peace talks. But whatever promise he commits will be retracted days or months after. What were given in the left hand will be taken twice on the other. Ano po ang ibig sabihin nito, Mr. Speaker, mga kapako kinatawan? Pangangakuhan ang maumayan pagkatapos babawiin at mas higit pa. Just like his predecessors, the Duterte administration upholds the globalization policies instead of offering new strategies for inclusive economic growth. Majority of the Filipinos still poverty-stricken. In twenty fifteen, five of the nine basic sectors consisting of farmers, fishermen, children, self-employed and unpaid family workers, and women belonging to poor families had higher poverty incidence than the general population estimated at twenty-one point six percent. According to government statistics, instead of addressing the roots of poverty, the government pushed forward the institutionalization of the IMF World Bank-backed DOLAL program, Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program. The lower house recently approved a security of ten-year bill that merely institutionalizes the practice of so-called permissible job contracting instead of ending labor contractualization. The proposed measure strengthens the security of a contractor and is full of loopholes that can be prone to circumvention and abuse. Although the Free Irrigation Act was passed this year, the majority of our farmers are still landless. Even upland double-barrel to come, the anti-drug war campaign has failed to annihilate unlawful drugs in the nation but instead prompt a surge of drug-related killings that had killed in excess of thousands of individuals. Nanatiling pangimbabaw at militarista ang aksyon sa pagtangkang pagresolba sa isyong malalim ang pinagugatan. Napakarami na pong namatay sa diumanay digmaan kontra droga na ang pangunahing casualty ay ang mga mahihirap. The killings of innocent lives continue as the president and his crew is pushed for the extension of martial law in Mindanao and the termination of the peace talks with the revolutionary organizations. The atrocities committed by the police force and the military has spread all over the country, taking innocent lives of the Lumads in Mindanao, the farmers in the countryside, and other indigenous people in different regions. The cases presented by the People's Organization from Bangdon, Abra, highlight the reflection of these anti-people policies in the region. The Abra communities have rich knowledge and experience in their practice of development work based on self-reliance and self-determination. However, there are many barriers that hinder the community to do so such as political vilification of the armed forces of the Philippines towards People's Organization and humanitarian institution, accusing the projects as either funded, supported, or for the benefit of New People's Army. State forces and some local government officials deter the entry of the much-needed development projects and services. Aerial bombings continue to prevail due to the counterinsurgency operations in several parts of the ancestral territories of indigenous tinggian. In Malibkong, Abra, the PNP and the AFP claim that there were no aerial bombings by the military in the communities despite testimonies of residents that at least fourteen phosphorus bombs were dropped in their rice fields and forests. The residents also gathered big shrapnels indicating not only phosphorus but also fatal bombs. Recently, Roger Gonzalez, a fifty-year-old farmer and council member of the Nagkahiusang Maguuma sa Agusan del Sur kilusang magbubukid ng Pilipinas, Namasur KMP, was illegally arrested by about thirty combined SWAT and provincial public safety battalion, PPSP, personnel in his home in Talakogon, Agusan del Sur. The arresting officers claimed that he was in possession of a caliber three-five-seven gun. Without showing a search warrant, the team began searching his house. Illegal arrests seem to be the current trend on the government's nonexistent efforts to uplift human rights. The forcible arrest on impossible trumped-up charges of Mark Lynn Maudjomaga and Rafi Bilosis is a desperate attempt to undermine the growing protests against the fascist Duterte regime. By illegally arresting human rights defenders, Duterte thinks he can put an end to the growing mass movement against this anti-people agenda. Moreover, organizations pushing forward the People's Agenda are ostracized. Enforcably disappeared, charged with trumped-up cases are worst killed. Peasant leader Ronald Manlapat and a member of the local chapter of the National Federation of Sugar Workers, NSFW, in Negroes Occidental, was shot by an unknown assailant at the back of his head. Previously, Manlapat had been receiving threats for being for being actively involved in organizing laborers and farmers in their village. Contrary to the People's outcry for progressive economic and political reforms, the government coins the word "development" and has been used to suppress any critics to its anti-democratic policies. Questioning any government projects or activities carried out in the name of development was then considered a subversive act against the state and the government. Ang gobyerno at ang kanyang pasistang katangian, ang pinakamalaking balakid sa pangkalahatang kaunlaran ng bansa. Ang drug war, counterinsurgency war, at ang batas militar sa Mindanao ay tatlong digmaang inilulunsad ng rehming Duterte kontra mamayan. These three wars are the essential tools of the administration to achieve its goals, to consolidate power and move to authoritarian rule. Duterte's refusal to continue the peace negotiations with the National Democratic Front of the Philippines and recent "shoot the vagina" remark against female rebels is a manifestation of the government's refusal to address the roots of the armed conflict and forge comprehensive agreements on social, economic, and political reforms. Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, the 17 Sustainable Goals towards a more prosperous, equitable, and sustainable development can only be realized through pushing forward plans and programs that will provide land distribution to farmers, substantial wage hikes, genuine agrarian reform, purposeful pro-Pilipino industrial policy, and direct public delivery of education, health, and housing. But the current plans of the administration continue to focus on foreign investments over Filipino capital, exports over the domestic market, business owners' profits over worker-employee welfare, and landlord rights over peasant entitlements. Mr. Speaker, these goals can only be achieved if the government is willing to institute policies that will go against vested interests. As legislators, may we be responsive to their calls and aspirations as we continue to advocate for laws and policies that duly advance their right to self-determined development, a development based on social justice. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congresswoman Brosas. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the honorable Brosas to the Committee on Rules.
No objection. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Sara Jane Elago for her privileged speech.
No objection. Congresswoman Sara Elago is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Magandang gabi po sa lahat. I rise in a matter of personal and collective privilege on the advocacy campaign of Stand With Samar. Members and supporters of peasants from Northern Samar, under the banner of Northern Samar Small Farmers Association, or NSSFA, are here in Manila to drumbeat their demands for assistance and respect for human rights. They aim to engage with the national government and call attention to the continuing plight of their communities, still devastated by typhoons which swept through the eastern Visayas region over the past four years, and worse, with pest infestation affecting major crops in the province. On February 23, Mr. Speaker, they joined us in Moraita, where the main program of the Metro Manila Protest Convergence of the nationwide #WalkOutPH was held. Not only students and young people were present, but also professors, faculty members, school administrators, canteen vendors, jeepney drivers, peasants, fisherfolks, and workers. Tagumpay ang naging pagkilos na mga kabataan sa buong bansa para sa kanilang mga karapatan, sa kalayaan, at sa demokrasya. Pagpupugay sa lahat ng mga makabayan at matatapang na kumilos noong araw na iyon. Na sa kabila ng mga banta ng kick-out, ang naging sagot na mga kabataan ay mas malalaking mga walkout at mga pagkilos na nagpapakita ng kanilang pakikiisa. More than a youth quake, Manila witnessed a People's quake. Mr. Speaker, we requested a representative from the Small Farmers Group from Northern Samar to deliver a solidarity message during the #WalkOutPH program. They volunteered Ati Marisa Kabalhao, who was also a member of People's Surge, a group that has taken the lead in organizing disaster victims to serve as watchdogs in the implementation of the government's calamity-related programs. She spoke of their plight as farmers and disaster victims, the urgency of their demands, and how they planned to go from one government office to another to demand accountability, and how their schedules were packed with support and integration visits of students, health professionals, government employees, religious and faith-based organizations. In a letter which they have sent to our office last week, Mr. Speaker, they recount that the peasants of the province who are victims of successive typhoons such as Yolanda, Glenda, Ruby, Senyang, and Nona have received very minimal aid from the government. Based from the breather of their advocacy campaign, several villages have not received any aid at all, and rehabilitation efforts are at no rate felt by the farmers. From the very little that was left from the onslaught of consecutive storms, peasants of the province took best efforts to recover, only to be devastated further by pests. And, Mr. Speaker, abaca, one of the main products of the province, has been heavily affected. Northern Samar is considered as the regional hub in the production of abaca. And it's the second-biggest abaca-producing province in the entire country. 11% of the total abaca production in the country comes from the province, with 3,373,750 kilograms of abaca produced by the province in the first half of 2016, as noted by the Philippine Fiber Industry Development Authority. People's organizations have raised these issues to the national government in previous protests. They shared that even public officials from the municipality of Las Navas joined the farmers in storming the gates of the Department of Agriculture in December 2016. A municipal resolution has already been passed to address the problem, but still to no avail. Another major agricultural output, rice, is also affected by pests, particularly the bacterial leaf blight pest. Coconut, on the other hand, is affected by coconut scale insect. Almost all of the main agricultural outputs of the province have been affected by the pest. According to the peasant group, recovery is impossible as long as the agriculture and fishery sector in the province remain neglected. They have repeatedly sought the help of the government regarding their situation, but till did they expect that militarization will be the response? According to the group, Mr. Speaker, gross human rights violations have been recorded in the hinterlands of the province, perpetrated by no less than the elements of the armed forces of the Philippines. Some of these rights violations are as follows: psychological warfare operations are being conducted against civilians; schools are used as barracks by the military; places of worship are consistently disrespected by the military troops when they use it as their barracks and remote station; torture, arbitrary arrest, death threats, damaging of crops, and forced labor. To boot, Mr. Speaker, they wrote, "The peasants have no land to till, no government support and services for farmers and fisherfolks; coconut farmlands are infested with coconut scale insect, or coccolisap; abaca is infested with bonti top virus; people who are trying to start a new life in the hinterlands cannot live in peace because of intense military operations; it is like the farmers are struck between purgatory and hell." Mr. Speaker, the participation of small farmers and their supporters in such an organized campaign to air their grievances is a move that inspires and emboldens us young people to further arouse, inform, unite, and mobilize our fellow Filipinos for the democratic assertion of people's rights. We salute their self-organization and tireless initiative in pursuit of their legitimate demands. Mr. Speaker, here are the demands of the Stand With Samar peasant caravan. First is to provide immediate financial subsidy and relief to all families with damaged crops. Second is to craft and implement a pro-people agricultural rehabilitation program. Third is to junk the anti-people typhoon recovery plan as according to them is anti-people and pro-big business. So we must craft a new program that is anchored on pro-people objectives and policies. We must create such plan that underwent a consultation, coordination, and partnership with farmers. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, they are calling for the pullout of AFP troops in the province and put a halt to the streak of gross human rights violations that they have reportedly committed. These demands deserve no further delay in response. They must neither be ignored nor suppressed. Hindi po katulad ng nabalitaan natin ngayong hapon, Mr. Speaker. Na sa kanilang tinatayo na campout sa labas ng Department of Agriculture, kung saan nais po nilang maipaabot pa ang kanilang mga panawagan, lahat po ng naitayunan nila ay binuwag. Lahat ng naitayuna at naikabit ay tinanggal. Buti nalang, Mr. Speaker, ay walang nasaktan. Mr. Speaker, huwag po natin payagan na meron pang masaktan. Tama na ang pasakit sa kanila na dulot ng gutom, na dulot ng militarisasyon. Sila ay nananawagan ang suporta para sa sapat na subsidiyo, relief, rehabilitation, paggulong ng mga programa para sa tunay na repormang agrario. Huwag natin sasagutin ang mga panawagan nito ng pagbuwag ng kanilang pagkakaisa, ng pagbuwag ng kanilang kampuhan dahil sila ay nari dito at nagpunta dito ng buo ang loob na ipapaabot at ipapanalo ang kanilang mga panawagan. Let us support the Northern Samar Small Farmers Association by echoing their demands resoundingly. Let us all stand with Samar. To all our fellow legislators, we hope that we can promptly host a dialogue here with the Stand With Samar participants to explore and exhaust what can be our points of unity and plan of action. We call on the public, especially the Filipino youth, to come and visit the peasants campout. Isusulong po nila na maibuu ito at maitayo sa labas mismo ng Department of Agriculture. They will be hosting a solidarity cultural program every night, starting... Starting today, Mr. Speaker. We must go and show our support and get to know more of their stories of struggle and resilience. Let us support the very people who bring food to our tables. Kabataan stands with Samar. Again, Mr. Speaker, nananawagan po tayo, lahat tayo ay tumindig na kasama nila. Maraming salamat.
Thank you very much, Congresswoman Sara Elago. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the honorable Elago to the Committee on Rules. So move.
No objection. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Salvador Belaro of Unang Edukasyon Party List, who wishes to avail the privilege hour.
No objection. Congressman Salvador Belaro is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Before I proceed with the delivery of my privileged speech, Mr. Speaker, may I be allowed to make a short manifestation?
Go ahead, Congressman Belaro.
Mr. Speaker, I just want to make it to record that this representation from Oneang Edukasyon Party List joins the clamor for general salary increase, which was earlier espoused by the discussion between the presiding officer and that of one act party list, representative from act party list. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Noted. Please proceed.
Let me begin with my privileged speech by citing that our homes were often told by our parents that when we go out of the world, we always have to put our best foot forward. In the community of nations, this is already urban legend, that we claim that we have the English advantage as our comparative advantage in the global labor market. Now comes the report of Hopkins International Partners last week, debunking that fact, that in fact, what is the reality is that our university graduates have in fact fallen below that of global standards. This means, ladies and gentlemen, only one thing, that when we claim that we have the English advantage, in fact, we are not putting our best foot forward, but in reality, we are just pulling our legs. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, distinguished guests at the gallery, especially those from the the Council of Management Educators and Practitioners of the Philippines, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The report is also telling us that our supposed best foot, that of English proficiency, is suffering from arthritis. Consider this data, ladies and gentlemen. In the said two-year study, Filipino university graduates averaged only 630, a far cry from the possible score of 850 required by business process outsourcing companies the world over. The study also noted that it is lower than the competency requirement for taxi drivers in the United Arab Emirates and lower than that of the high school graduates of Thailand and Vietnam. I am sure that this is a report that our elders would regret. Many of those from older generations would claim, which is quite verifiable, that even in schools in the provinces, people speak better English in the olden days. In fact, many of you would agree with me that each one of us probably know a lot of older people whom we have only finished high school and yet have a better command of English than many of our graduates of today. In view of this development, it is just fair to ask, who or what are the culprits? Of course, the usual suspect is of course the agency tasked with taking care of the education for young people at the formative stage, the Department of Education. While it may not be fair to ascribe to it, the primal difficulty of getting our schoolchildren to school, given a milieu of poverty and all the related problems it brings, the agency certainly has a pivotal role in making out the most of whatever budget it can get. Ladies and gentlemen, let me emphasize this. At the heart of the problem is the Department of Education's neglect, neglect of giving English the proper emphasis it deserves in the instruction of our schoolchildren. Instead of allowing it to grow in conjunction with the teaching of Filipino, our national language, the resulting scenario was that the promotion of Filipino in our schools came at the expense of teaching English, when the ideal but also realizable scenario could be the mutual development. could be the mutual development of both English and Filipino as languages of instruction. Worse, the Department of Education also allowed the use of the vernacular, the regional dialects, in the teaching of our schoolchildren. Ladies and gentlemen, this representation, together with other members of the House of Representatives, such as CHD Chair Anhofer, Congresswoman Malua Costa Alba, Congresswoman Juliette Uoy, and Congressman Peter Unabia, just came from a regional consultation on the fate of several extension centers of Okidnon State University and a University of Science and Technology of the Philippines. During the consultations, one local government official related to this representation, Dep Ed, making instruction in the local dialect, when in fact, the students already know the dialect. Accordingly, there is simply no value added, value added, to the vernacularization of such instruction as it deprives the students of less opportunity to practice in school setting the global languages of science, mathematics, and of course commerce and industry, which is English. Practice after all, ladies and gentlemen, is regularity of use. Consistency through time, preparation for perfection. After all, there is no other road to better English than constant practice. From basic education, we also need to reexamine how higher education deals with the matter of the English proficiency of our college students. The Commission on Higher Education, CHED, certainly needs to reexamine its curricular offerings to arrest the worsening English proficiency of our college graduates. We may also need to reexamine the role of the media, especially institutional in commercial media, and this development. Perhaps, it is about time that we obligate the institutional press and the mass media to help in the development of programs that would contain the proliferation of pidgin or hybrid English and the development of programs that will enhance the English proficiency of our youth. The telecommunications companies should also share a part of their responsibility in our quest to reassert our English advantage, if not supremacy, in the global labor market. In this era of abbreviated text messages, our telecommunications companies may be compelled as a condition to the renewal of their franchises to make use of technology so that correct spelling of text messages may be promoted and that it would be easier for the youth of today to enhance their vocabulary. Indeed, arresting the trend of worsening English proficiency of our youth would require a multi-sectoral effort. On the part of the legislature, the Seventeenth Congress, we also need to review the pertinent laws and in this regard, the initial point of inquiry should be the highest law of the land, which is the 1987 Constitution. On this point, let me point out that it may not be fair to blame the CHED or Dep Ed primarily for the worsening English proficiency of our students. This is so because even the Constitution, the very Constitution, is wishy-washy with respect to the promotion and development of the English language. Please allow me to cite Article 14, Section 6 of the 1987 Constitution, which provides that the national language of the Philippines is Filipino. Kindly make no mistake of this. This representation is for all the retention and promotion of Filipino as our national language. It is and will always be the national language of our country, the language of unity and the language of national pride. What is problematic, ladies and gentlemen, is the subsequent constitutional provision, which is Article 14, Section 7, which provides, if I may quote, "For purposes of communication and instruction, the official languages of the Philippines are Filipino and until otherwise provided by law, English." Ladies and gentlemen, at the expense of sounding repetitious, please allow me to reiterate this point, that this representation holds that there should be no debate on Filipino as our national language. There should also be no debate on its being an official language of our country. The problem lies in the status of English, whether it could also be elevated into an official language of our country together with Filipino. Ladies and gentlemen, kindly take note of the nuance between a national language and an official language. For this reason, this representation after this privileged speech will be filing a bill that will make English an official language of the Philippines, together with Filipino, so as to fill in the void left by the 1987 Constitution. Indeed, it is high time that we provide an enabling law that promote, that will promote and strengthen English being the lingwa frangka of instruction, commerce, and industry in a globalized community. That way, the agencies tasked with the instruction of our schoolchildren, the Department of Education and the Commission on Higher Education in particular, will be guided accordingly in the formulation of policies and regulations that affect the education of our youth. In a previous speech before this August body, ladies and gentlemen, this representation cited that the Duterte administration has revolutionized Philippine education with the Free College Education Law and the Free Wi-Fi Bill, Lo. In relation to this, my dear colleagues, I would like again to make an appeal to you to support the bill that I will file on the promotion and strengthening of the English language as a major language of instruction in this country, of commerce and industry. This would strengthen the comparative advantage of our human resources in the world market as English is the current lingwa frangka in our globalized world. It would also complete the revolution in Philippine education that we started, as strengthening competencies in the lingwa frangka is already a step ahead in the world labor market. In the beginning of my speech, I liken strengthening the English proficiency of our youth to putting our best foot forward. That is so as that would enable our youth of today and the generations to come to dance with the music as understanding the lingwa frangka would make them understand the language of the music and to act appropriately according to required cadence, rhythm, and harmony. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now at this juncture of our national history, wherein we have a choice whether we allow the proliferation of this condition of our English proficiency or to arrest it. My dear colleagues, let me appeal to your sense of reason and sensibility because I believe that strengthening the English competencies of our youth is the best gift we could give them at this time. That way, we could give them the gift of language, which is also the gift of development, empowerment, and survival. By analogy, I started by saying that we have to put our best foot forward because that would enable us, today's generation and future generations, to dance with the music. This is true because that way, that would assure the youth of today and that of tomorrow, that they will not become the wallflowers in whatever music tomorrow will hold, that they will not become bed swimmers in games of tomorrow, but rather, we can be confident they have a good chance of becoming not only survivors, but also opinion makers, if not rubble rousers. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no assurance in our participation in shaping tomorrow, but certainly, we as a people can do our best in shaping what it could become. By strengthening the competencies in the English language of the youth and the youth of tomorrow, we can be assured that the future generations will not only dance with the music, but also survive in it, enjoy it, and wiggle it. Again, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant afternoon. Long live Philippine education. Long live the Seventeenth Congress. Long live the Philippines.
Well said Congressman Bilaro. Joint Leader? For the information of everyone, what is the official language of communication of this chamber?
Mister Speaker, kapampangan niya po.
Not dekolano?
Cebuano.
Cebuano. What is official language of communication?
It's English. It's English, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed. Joint Leader?
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Bilaro to the Committee on Rules. So move.
Objection. Motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ariel Casilao of Annapawis Partilis who wishes to avail the privilege are.
Congressman Ariel Casilao is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Salamat Mister Speaker. Ginong speaker, mga kapwa ko mambabatas. Magandang hapon sa inyong lahat. Saang mapagpalayang hapon po. Nitong nakaraang linggo, February 18 to 22, naging kabahagi ang kinatawang ito sa isinagawang international solidarity mission sa apat na rehiyon ng Mindanao, upang siya satin, imbestigahan, ang napakahabang listahan at mga karumaldumal na krimen. Mga kaganapan na kung saan karamihan nito ay mga paglabag sa karapatang pantao ng ating mga magsasaka at mga kapatid na mga katutubong lumad. Sa Western Mindanao Region, Northern Mindanao Region, Karaga Region, Sok Sarjen, at sa rehiyon ng aking pinanggalingan, Southern Mindanao Region. Naging bahagi po ang kinatawang ito sa mission area sa Lake Cebu, South Cotabato. Kung saan inimbestigahan ang isang pangyayari, karumaldumal na pangyayari noong December 3, 2017, na kung saan mayroong walong katao, puro mga membro ng Tibuli Dulangan Manobo Tribe na biktima ng isang masaker. Oo, ginong speaker. Masaker taliwas sa mga nagdaang pahayag ng Armed Forces of the Philippines, partikular ng 33rd Infantry Battalion, sa pangungunan ni Lieutenant Colonel Harold Kabunok. Nakuno ang kaganapan noong December 3, 2017 ay isang produkto ng lihitimong encuentro. Ginong speaker, I joined more than 50 delegates of mixed nationalities, local delegations, foreigners coming from the International Committee on Human Rights for the Philippines, or ICHIRP, and then Mindanaoans for Civil Liberties. We traveled four hours bone-breaking and death-defying ride. Magkabilaan po ang mga pangpang, napakalalim na pangpang. Ginamit po namin ang sasakyang sa lokal na tinatawag na sadam dahil hindi kakayanin ng four-wheel vehicle. Kahit ng motorsiklo o skylab ay limitado din. Naglakad kami ng halos tatlong oras papunta sa sityo Datalbong Langon, Barangay Ned, Lake Cebu, South Cotabato. Kasama namin ang mga survivor ng sinasabing masaker. Kasama ko ang asawa at anak ng pangunahing biktima na si Dato Victor Danyan. Mister Speaker, taliwas sa mga naglabasang mga report, partikular ng unang linggo matapos ang incidente na binabanggit ng AFP ng 33rd Infantry Battalion na kuno may nangyaring encuentro kaya napaslang ang walong tribong membro ng Manobo Dulangan Tribe. Pero ayon sa aking mga narinig, na salaysay ng mga mismong biktima survivor at pamilya ni Dato Victor, walang encuentrong naganap. Ibabahagi ko po Mister Speaker ang mga makatotohanang karanasan at detalyadong karanasan ng mga nakasaksi at mga survivor sa masaker na iyon. December 3, 2017, at around 11:00 a.m., dumating si barangay Captain Jerry Nobleta. Kasama ang kanyang kagawad na si Melencio Tongkay, isang kafgo at isang volunteer ng Balikat Rescue Team sa sityo Datalbong Langon, Barangay Ned, upang kausapin si Dato Victor Danyan, hingil sa kanyang ancestral kin, okati. Isang linggo bago ang December 3 incident, Mister Speaker. Ni-reclaim ng tribong Dulangan Manobo Tibuli sa pangungunan ni Dato Victor Danyan ang mahigit 1,600 hectares na area mula sa napasunang kontrata o agreement na Integrated Forest Management Agreement na inaward sa kompanyang DMCI or KunSunhe Incorporated. Ang areaang ito na tinamnan ng mga kape, paint trees sa kunong proyektong reforestation ay binawi dahil nga pasuna ang IFMA na ito, binawi ng tribo sa pangungunan ni Dato Danyan, ni Victor Danyan, para tamnan ng mais, gulay, at iba pang mga food crops. Noong pumunta, si kapitan Nobleta sa kanilang lugar, December 3, 11:00 a.m., pilit na pinapasurender si Dato Victor at inaakusahan na siya daw ay NPA kasama ng kanyang anak at kanyang mga pamangkin at kanyang ibang mga kalalakihang tribo. Ngunit nagtaka at giniit ni Dato Victor Danyan na hindi po siya NPA at sa matagal na panahon, siya ay nandiyan sa area niya sa kanyang kadti upang linangin at idevelop ang area sa kapakinabangan ng kanyang tribo. Pilit na pinapapirma si Dato Victor ng isang dokumentong hindi niya naiintindihan. Yun pala, ang dokumentong ito ay isang kontratang magpapalawig. Sumasang ayon kuno si Dato Victor na papalawigen ng 25 years ang IFMA agreement ng KunSunhe sa lupang claim ni Dato Victor. Bandang alas 2, hindi nakuha ang pirma ni Dato Victor. Umalis sila barangay kapitan Nobleta at biglang dumating ang mga membro ng 33rd Infantry Battalion and 27th Infantry Battalion at nagpaulan ng putok. Sa salaysay po ng mga biktima at mga survivor, hindi po armado ng anumang baril sina Dato Victor. Bagkos, sila ay may mga indigenous hawak na mga indigenous na gamit pangsaka, bolo, pana, para sa kanilang ginagamit panghanting. Ngunit pinagbabaril sina Dato Victor sampun ang kanyang kasamahan at halos dalawang oras ng walang tigil na pagpaputok ng 27th and 33rd Infantry Battalion, walo katao ng membro ng tribo ang napaslang. Si Dato Victor Danyan, ang kanyang anak, Victor Danyan Jr., Artemio Danyan, ang kanyang son-in-law, Pato Caliar. Artemio Danyan ang kanyang san inlo, Pato Kalyardo, Samuel Angoy, Tu Jamante, Bobot Lagase, at Simating Bantal. Kinabukasan, sinabi ni Colonel Harold Kabunok na ang walong katao na matay na ito ay mga NPA at membro kuno ng unit militar sa ilalim ni Dato Victor Danyan, aka Commander Danyan. Mr. Speaker, malinaw po sa karanasan at kwento ng mga survivors ng masaker na yon ay pinagbabaril sila na parang mga baboy ramo. Hindi armado, walang kalaban-laban, ngunit walang habas na pinagbabaril. Ano po ang kadahilanan kung bakit tinarget ang komunidad ni Dato Victor Danyan? Sa 1,600 hectares na lupaing nasa ilalim ng kadti claim ni Dato Victor, nandyan din ang halos anim na raang hektaryang plantasyon ng cape ng DMCI at nandyan din nakaamba ang 300 hectares na balak ioperate ang mining sa pamamagitan ng San Miguel Corporation. Ito po ang tingin ng komunidad kung bakit tinarget ni Red Tag si Dato Victor. At sinabi, pinagbintangan mga NPA. Sa mga nagdaang buwan, malinaw po ang paglaban ni Dato Victor upang protektahan ang kanyang lupang ninuno, ang kanyang kadti claim laban sa anumang pagpasok ng mga korporasyon tulad ng DMCI at ng SMC. Ang karanasan ko po na kung saan ang kinatawang mismong ito ay nakaranas din ang harassment sa aming pagpunta at pagbalik sa Coronadal City. Anim na checkpoint ang aming nadaanan, hinabol ng dalawang column ng 27th IB dahil sa order ni Governor Daisy Fuentes na hindi kami papuntahin o hindi kami papuntahin loon sa area na kung saan naganap ang masaker. Hindi namin narinig ano ang result ng imbestigasyon ng local government unit. Bagkos, sinangayunan ang claim ng AFP na ito ay produkto ng inkwentro. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa mambabatas, naghain po ang kinatawang ito kasama ng aking mga kasamahan sa Makabayan Block ng panukalang resolution para imbestigahan, House Resolution 1550, para imbestigahan ang kaganapan sa Barangay Ned, Lake Cebu, South Cotabato. Ngunit, paniniwala po ng kinatawang ito, ang karanasan, ang malagim na karanasan ng mga katid nating lumad na Manobo Dulangan at Tibuli sa South Cotabato ay hindi hiwalay sa napakaraming listahan ng paglabag sa karapatang pantao sa ibat-ibang bahagi ng Mindanao. Matapos po ang International Solidarity Mission, naging guest resource person po ang kinatawang ito sa dalawang araw na Mindanao Wide Human Rights Summit noong February 23 and 24 para buuin ang mga datos na nakalap sa ibat-ibang bahagi ng Mindanao na kung saan ginanap ang ISM sa mga mission areas. Sa kabuan sa inisyal na pagbubuo ng mga datos, 265 Trump-up charges are being faced by the different activists, religious workers, human rights advocates dahil tumututol sa pangyayari o sa nagaganap na martial law sa Mindanao. Ang nangyari noong December 3, 2017, Mr. Speaker, ay sana isang ebidensya noong tinatalakay ng kapulungang ito ang extension ng one year ng martial law sa Mindanao. Bit-bit sana ng kinatawang ito ang pamilya para kayo ay kumbinsihin at ipakita sa inyo kung bakit kailangan ng ipahinto itigil ang declarasyon ng martial law sa Mindanao. Dahil sa katotohanan, malayo po sa sinasabing walang paglabag sa karapatang pantao may puso na martial law ang binabanggit taliwas sa karanasan ng mga biktima ng martial law sa Mindanao. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa mambabatas, sana bigyang pansin ang panukalang resolution at mailunsad ang imbestigasyon para makita natin ang katotohanan labas doon sa ipinapakalat na kasinungalingan ng lokal na pamalaan at maging ng 33rd Infantry Battalion. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Casilaw. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Casilaw to the Committee on Rules.
Objection motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, with no other member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
No objection, motion is carried. Privilege hours hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session to tomorrow, Tuesday, February 27 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Tuesday, February 27, 4:00 p.m. Session adjourned.
Kapampang.
Make it.